Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. What's going on? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? How about there? All right. Could I have a roll call, please? No, could I have a roll call for council, please? Audra? Audra, can you hear me? I'm trying, trying to get a roll call. Yes? Here. Okay, let's see if this is better. Item two, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mayor?
Yes. Okay. Okay, could we have a motion for what the changes? For council to approve? First and the second, call of vote, please. Yes. Item three, policy item in staff reports, Mike, do we have anything? If not, we will just go ahead and move on to petition or communications. Oral or written, is there anyone online? We have 26 people listening in that would like to speak. If so, would you please, you know, say something that we can recognize you? If there being none, let's move on to item five, consent agenda approval. Item five A, approval of regular meeting minutes of June the 2nd, 2020. Item five B, appointment of Jonathan Bardaneshki, I guess, to the Historical Preservation Commission. This will fill out the five-member board that we have. Item C, approval of resolution designating the representative of the city to the NPGA Board of Directors and an alternate representative to the same. Steve Carell would be the director, Mike Valentine would be the alternate. Item D, approval of the bills for $1,904,008.68. Item E, approval of payroll, June 13th, 2020 through June the 26th, 2020, in the amount of $324,663.29. Will entertain a motion, please. Second. Call of vote? Yes. Item six, public hearing. Item six A, public hearing for consideration of inordinates authorizing the City of Trinidad business bridge loan program. Hearing is now open. Wally, I see you're on, can you give us a rundown of the ordinance, please? Okay. Does county bond and council have any questions? Mr. Shu, do you have any questions?
No, I sure don't.
Mr. Williamson?
No questions.
Ms. Gregel?
No questions.
Ms. Goodall?
Nothing.
Ms. Oboltry? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has, that would like to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance? If not? Hearing is now closed. Item six A one, second reading of inordinates authorizing the City of Trinidad business bridge loan program for $45,774.54. Could have a motion, please. Second. Council have any further discussion? If not, call of vote, please. Yes. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. On to item eight, eight eight, designation of a Colorado Municipal League Voting Delegate for 2020, which is a virtual annual business meeting. Just some information on that, this year, of course, it's virtual, done by email, the meeting is on the 25th, I think we do have the information. You know, I don't know if anybody other than Rusty, Rusty, you've been to the CML meetings, you understand the process, other than myself, but I'd rather have Rusty if anyone does, if someone doesn't have any issues with that. If someone else would like to take that on, that's okay. Could have a motion, please, for Rusty Goodall to be the designated CML Voting Delegate for 2020 annual business meeting? Second. Any discussion? Call of vote, please. Yes. Okay, on to item eight B, which we changed, which will be the consideration of second variance request for parts of the safer home order requirements and corresponding executive order. Before I ask for a motion, just want to let everybody know that I did receive a call from Dr. Epper with some concerns about the variance and moving forward with this. In the end, this evening, I ended up having to have her call, and I think she talked to Ms. Gabrielson about how to move forward with this. And the biggest thing is that I think there's some restrictions that they want to work out together. And it's kind of put us in a unique situation because if we were to not okay the variance the way it is, it would stall the variance, they would submit it without our signatures. And then what it would do is it would put a damper on what we could do here local with the other variance items that are on there. And to remove one item from, from the variance per our request would make it kind of difficult. So in talking to Kim from the Health Department, and she had talked with Ms. Gabrielson, and she was saying that to, asked us if we were to okay the variance. And if approved, when it does come back, then I guess an additional verbiage could be introduced, you know, between the two organizations. So I don't know if anybody has any questions before we actually take a motion on this. You know, let me do this, and I'm not going to get a, ask her to do any response, but I see Carol Gabrielson is on, I can see her. And Carrie, if you would kind of just say yes, that you understand what I've talked about, and I think, Irona's on there too, so I think she's had an opportunity to talk with Kim, is that correct, to say, take your head, yes or no? Okay. So after your discussion with her, are you in, does it look like there might be something that you could work out, yes or no? Maybe? Les, is that all right that she speaks? Go ahead. Okay, so... I guess the best thing to do is we would put our, put this as to a motion with a condition that there's going to be some additional discussions between the county, between the Health Department and TSJC. Would that suffice? Okay, so let's do this, let's go ahead, typically I do a motion, so I need a motion from council to that effect?
So I'll make a motion that occurs with said, that that's the variance.
Okay. Could I have a second? Do you think that would work? I think that would probably work. Could I have a second? Any discussions? Mr. Shu?
No, it's just concerns mostly TSJC, I know there's a bill for bars, theaters and stuff like that, is there any amendments to that? Or is that going to be just the way it says right there?
It would be just for, it would just be for TSJC. Mr. Williamson? Ms. Gregel, do you have any questions? Yep?
No, I talked to Dr. Epper and Mrs. Gabrielson this afternoon, and I understand where their, their, the question arises when, because the variance that is being proposed now has stricter, stricter attendance requirements than does the state. So they're cutting it, from what I understand, and I'm sorry, but I think that's really important for the, for the community college. That's all I have.
Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing.
Ms. Oboltry?
No questions.
Okay. And I don't have any questions, and as long as, you know, Ms. Epper has, is okay with it, I think we can move forward with the vote. Could we have a vote call, please? Yes. Okay. On to item eight. B, or eight C, actually. Which would be, I can make sure, hold on a second. Okay, it would be eight C. City Council applicant interviews and decision to fill the unexpired term of council member Anthony Mate. And what I'm going to do is, we have all 10 applicants sequestered as we possibly can in various places within city council or the city hall. All city council members are in city hall right now, but they are spread out throughout various offices throughout city halls as well. So... Yes. Yes, any council member that has a door, please shut the door, please. Something I wanted to tell council. Tonight, we will be selecting a City of Trinidad resident to fill the vacancy created by Mr. Anthony Mate. 5.14 vacancies from this City of Trinidad charter states. Within 45 days when the vacancy was created, council shall choose by majority vote a duly qualified person to fill the vacancy, and that is what we are here doing tonight. Please note, of course, that if whoever is appointed, that this will be an 18-month period until the next regular municipal election. If they wish to move forward in the fall of 2021 to put in an application, they would be then voted in by the city electorate, which will be a four-year term. The applicants, of course, must be eligible with registered elector of the City of Trinidad, a US citizen for five years, a domicile in the City of Trinidad for 12 months. City Attorney Les Downs, and I will be asking questions. And due to the issue that we have to make this decision via go-to meeting, I ask that all council listen intently to determine the best possible candidate to fill the vacancy. And I would recommend that your choice will be to select someone that will strengthen and/or add to the city council expertise that we already have in place. So with that, I would like to begin with the first person. And I think, and that would be Mr. James Casillas, I believe. We're getting a little loud, just close the door until we're done. Okay. Is it working for you, James?
I'm sorry?
Is it working for you, okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Casillas, first of all, I want to say thank you for applying for the vacant city council seat. On May the 19th, at a regular city council meeting, Councilman Anthony Mate resigned from the city council vacant, creating the vacancy. 5.14 of vacancy states. City of Trinidad charter, within 45 days when vacancy is created, council shall choose by majority vote a duly qualified person to fill the vacancy. This is what we are here doing tonight. Please note that at point, this will be an 18-month period until the next regular municipal election. If you wish to go forward in the fall of 2021, you can put your application to be voted by the city electorate, which will end being a four-year term after that. Due to the number of applicants, we will be holding a 10-minute timeframe for introduction and questions, so please be direct and brief, so we will be able to ask as many questions as possible, so council members can make an informed decision. I will now have Attorney, City Attorney Les Downs to explain tonight's process, go ahead, Les.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, let's go, let's go ahead and begin. Mr. Casillas, why do you want to be on city council?
Well, I think I have some greater output to give and give some of my experiences that I have, and also serving as the sheriff for Fort Worth in San Luis County. Being on various boards, as I mentioned, I'm a veteran, not only state, any local, but also in the state, different boards that I was applying to by the governors of Colorado, three of them, that were there. I just think that I have a great admiration for our city, I want to see it prosper, I want to see it grow. I want to see things come into our city that we haven't had before. I want to see our economic structure increase, and be better for the whole citizens, for just people that live here. I've always been one that, you know, if you're put in a position to serve, then serve, do what you're supposed to do without question, and give what you can. I've always done it to my life, which was involved personally for the 35 years I gave there. Previously, like I said, I was a coal miner. I also was a firefighter for the City of Trinidad for almost seven years. If you're going to live here near private, then do what you can to further improve the environment of your community and our county as well, we're all one and the same. And I think we have to work out better relationships as we have with the county, and I know that from being the sheriff before I retired, and also with the state. Things are not the same as they were a long time ago. We increased with different policy, different rules, technology has taken over, social media. We have to be prepared for all these things here, and how to do our services for the people that put us in office.
Mr. Downs, you want to take the next question?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Casillas, give us an example over the last couple of years of something that you think the city council has done well, like?
Well, I, you know, I give a lot of credit to those people that do stand up, can become leaders, like every county or any organization that you step up and present yourself and do well for the betterment of the people you serve. Overall, I mean, there's a lot that the city has done. Mine Malachi Valley is one of the biggest things in the city, that's under management now. The acquisition of the Crazy French Ranch, you know, the culture and the arts that the city's trying to implement now. I mean, these are all things that hopefully are going to make our community more advertisement to everybody, you know, as Rick Rich and all these other people have an aspect with the scheme. You know, we have a lot of culture, we have a lot of history here. And I think the city is tending to go in the direction of trying to get us into that mold, so that people say, well, let's get down to Trinidad, you know, we put their down there to Trinidad. But we are trying to improve what our look is.
I'll take the next question. Mr. Casillas, what do you see as the greatest challenge the city faces?
Well, I think just our own infrastructure, you know, water, medical health, our medical services. And I think we have to do, and this is just in my view in here, you know, it's many different parts. I think we all interact with each other, kind of separately a little bit, that we don't really get, like, give to the hospital, the school board, you know, and work well with other agencies. We need to tend to look at, see how you, of our vacancies. All these agencies have made up our savings. It's not all about us, it's about we, we together, and we can all do better by becoming together, and everything is done.
Les, take the next question?
Thank you. Mr. Casillas, how do you feel about the laws until we're won?
I'm sorry, Les?
How do you, what are your personal opinions about marijuana? You know, the City of Trinidad, City of Colorado, if legalized marijuana, what do you think about the marijuana industry in Trinidad and the whole concept of legalized marijuana overall?
You know, I was asked that question, Mr. Downs, and I ran from a standard to his back. You know, the people passed it, that's what their will was. We all believe in, you know, the will of people, and that's what they wanted. Myself personally, you know, I don't use it, but if it helps somebody, I mean, it's there for somebody's benefit, I mean, it's like the air we breathe. Some people can't breathe it at all. You know, if marijuana does help somebody, then helps us financially too to benefit some of their agencies or programs that we have. You know, that's fine. And let me just add, you see, when I was the president of county sheriffs, we worked against medical marijuana, it was recreational. It wasn't because we were against it just that there was no way yet that was implemented, how we were going to fight the impact. And, you know, with grows and stuff like that, it wasn't that we were just against it.
Mr. Casillas, can you tell me, tell us what city council, what's something that the city council has not done so well, or something that you disagree with over the past few years?
I'm going to be honest, because I've never looked to see what city does and what the city didn't do. I hope that in the plan that they have, you know, with the infrastructure, that, you know, our roads, our water, those utilities that we have are taken care of and made better for the citizens and our community. So I'm not here to ask or say the city hasn't got this, or they shouldn't be doing this. I don't speak on issues unless I know everything that's at hand there.
Right, Les?
Hey, thank you. Mr. Casillas, is there one overriding issue, one main driving force that is causing even one of our first state capitals? Anything that you think is your hallmark cause?
No, I haven't thought about it, and not to, and to pass that, and mention to Mayor Rico, which I'm not wanting to, but I was thinking of running people on me about to the mayor, and I told him, no. I think somebody should, yeah, when that person else is the mayor, I think they should be part of the council, so they learn all what deals with the city's structure, what implementations have you made to be out there. I just like to share, you know, when I ran for sheriff, I had experience from a cop to a deputy, learning all the facets...
Recognize the good work of each one of these organizations.
Les?
Thank you. Um, and, and Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. You heard Mr. Smith's answer. I didn't. Okay. Um, Mayor, do you know what?
Yes, I would just say, is there one overriding issue that causes you to want to run for city council?
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Smith, if you are on the city council, there will be times when you're on council that your opinion or your viewpoint will be challenged or counseled. How would you handle, how would your, your personality handle disagreements with your local council?
In that respect, I am very proud of my background as an educator. More than a dozen years in the higher education classroom. And Trinada State tracked me down and I've been teaching for them since I moved here permanently. In addition to that, I've also taught elementary schools, I've taught middle schools, and I've taught high schools, uh, different curricula. And that skill set of how to facilitate conversation in a classroom works very well to facilitate conversation where people disagree. Uh, if my viewpoint is challenged, that's, that's, that's the point of the city council. I respect that and I respect that is inherent, inherent role of this position. Uh, and how do I personally deal with my, my, I, I seek to find common ground. And I always love to be able to end an argument where not only, hey, we agree to disagree, but here's something that we do have in common. Here is a core belief that we can agree upon.
Uh, Mr. Smith, what is your understanding of the role of city council?
My understanding of the role of city council is to, uh, dare I say, protect and serve and make better the community of Trinidad and its citizens and residents. And that is a very broad mission statement. Um, yeah.
Okay. Les? Yes?
Thank you. What is the biggest and greatest challenge you perceive in the city of Trinidad?
One, one challenge, I, I'm not going to be able to qualify and tell you which one is the largest. One large challenge I identified earlier in identity, saying there's a lot of different well-intentioned organizations. And getting them to work together is going to really benefit this community. Um, that's a, I'll put that one there. Another challenge in this community is the marketing and the branding. We have lots of different well-intentioned organizations, publications, websites, tourism board. There's a lot of different entities that seek to identify and represent Trinidad outside of Trinidad. That's a, that's a growing edge for us, I see.
Mr. Smith, do you understand that if you're selected, you are required to follow policy advice and legal, legal advice of city staff? Are you willing to do that?
Yes.
Les?
Thank you. How do you feel about legalizing marijuana?
I moved to Vermont in the late nineteen nineties because I believed then, and I believe now, that cannabis deserves our recognition as both a medicine and a recreational substance. I expected in the late nineteen nineties to see Vermont be on the forefront of that. And after more than twenty years, I was gravely disappointed. I moved here in part because I believe this area has evolved in that respect. And in respect to legalized cannabis. Uh, and I believe that the safe regulation of such is possible and Trinidad proves it. I believe that, uh, this town can be a shining example of how cannabis legalization can be safe and work in other communities, communities as well.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, we have about one minute left.
Okay, one more question here then. Uh, could you please tell us what Trinidad, what commissions, boards and commissions that you have served on at the city of Trinidad?
Yes, I currently serve as the chair of the stored preservation commission. I was on the commission for a few months before being elected chair. That's it.
That's it? Okay, Mr. Smith, uh, thank you for your application and enjoying the speaking with you.
Thank you all.
And good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Murray, give me one second.
Uh, would you like me to keep this on?
You can, you can take it off.
I've already had and gotten over coronavirus, COVID nineteen.
You've gotten over it, you say?
Yeah, actually, I think I've had it twice. I had it, uh, got over about three months ago. And then I think it hit me again or the mutated form or something hit me again. And basically, four days at the same time. That was over six weeks ago, so.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Mr. Murray, thank you for applying for the vacant city council seat. Uh, on the May nine, on May nineteenth, at a regular city council meeting, Councilman Anthony Matei resigned from city council creating a vacancy. Five point one four vacancies states. Within forty-five, five days when the vacancy was created, councils shall choose by majority vote a duly qualified person to fill the vacancy. And that is what we are here for tonight. Please note that if we're appointed, there will be an eighteen, this will be an eighteen-month period until the next regular election, municipal election. If you wish to go forward in the fall of twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, you can put in your application to be voted in by the city electorate, which will then be a four-year term. Due to the number of applicants, we will holding, we will be holding a ten-minute timeframe for introduction and questions. So please be as direct and brief so we will be able to ask as many questions as possible so council members can make an informed decision. Mr. Downs will now explain to you the process for tonight. Go ahead, Les.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I, I don't know what to say. And it looks like, like.
Can you hear him?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, he's down. There is, there is, there is someone out there that needs to mute their, uh, the microphone. Okay, Les, go ahead, try again.
So is, is time starts over yet?
Yes.
I'm, I'm getting a really bad echo through this, so I'm hearing everything.
I'm trying to catch it. That's part of the problem here.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm standing up there quite a bit. Um, good evening, Mr. Murray. How are you, Mr.?
I'm doing excellent. Thank you for asking.
Good. Mr. Murray, uh, you are going to have ten minutes, a three-minute introductory, um, time period. And then seven minutes of questions from, um, the, the mayor and myself. Your time has not begun yet, but when it does, we'll last begin with introductory remarks. The conclusion of this council will be voting, uh, in the number two, five. Initially, forty finalists, and then one winner will be revealed from there. And they, they will be voted, you understand that, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's all. We go, Mayor, holders.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Neal. Arnold? Can you hear him now?
Can you hear him now?
Yeah.
Sorry, um, the lighting there, the cannabis, I mean, I can't see that person very well.
Um, there's, there's one, there's one window there. He's going to move over a little bit there.
We slide over, see if that gets us a little better.
Is that better? Okay, can, okay, can everybody hear him?
Everybody hear me okay?
Okay, all right, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and begin here. Uh, Mr. Murray, why do you want to be on city council?
Well, it's something that I've always been interested in, um, because it was a fill-in position. I took this as a good opportunity, um, to get in and really get a feel for it. And, uh, it's something I think I'm going to like a lot. It's something that may lead to other offices in the future. I also, uh, bought some land here in Trinidad where we live now. The locals refer to it as the body of, and we've done just incredible amount of work cleaning that up down there. Uh, we've made a really huge positive impact. And I want to see if there are any opportunities that I might be able to, uh, extend that and make a positive impact on the community.
Les?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Murray, can you give us an example of something you think the city has done well the last few years, please?
Well, one of the things I'm really excited about is the money that they donated for the Fisher's Peak, uh, which I'm sure everybody knows is going to be the second largest state park in Colorado. Um, I think that, uh, Trinidad has some, some crime issues. Um, I think there are some ways that that can be improved. Um, I, I really like what Mr. Chaney knows doing as far as, uh, fixing up some of the buildings downtown and so forth and everything that he's doing to the community. Um, I've been with a few city council meetings. I, I can't say honestly that anything spectacular jumps out at me, uh, but that's not to say that there aren't many such things.
Mr. Murray, what do you see as the greatest challenge the city faces?
Uh, I would say right now it's, it's crime. Um, and I, and not just because where I live, but because I live in Trinidad. Uh, I think that there could be some improvements made as far as bridging the gap between local community and police. And I've got some ideas about that.
Les?
Thank you. Mr. Murray, is there one overriding, one overriding issue that causes you to want to run for city council?
Uh, we moved here about five years ago. And I had spoken with my father about it. I'm thin. I'm an only child. My father has a PhD and my mother has a master's. And it's something that I've, I've always been interested in. Um, there's, to be honest with you, there are a lot of circumstances that have evolved over the past five years. And it, it's been a lot of good. And this seems like, uh, the right thing to do. The, the energy, the flow, the things that I'd like to do and the things I'm already doing. Uh, it just, it just feels right. Honestly, it just feels right.
Mr. Murray, what, uh, what would, what do you, would you add to or how would you strengthen city council if appointed?
Uh, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I've got a bad echo here.
Okay, what would you add to or how would you strengthen council by being on council?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat more down for me?
Okay.
I wish I could, I wish I could just echo her off.
Yeah, we, between both of us.
Let me stand over here and do that while I can hear you enough.
If appointed? What would you add to or how would you strengthen city council?
Well, I think by being objective in all decisions and simply making choices that I believe are right by God, uh, will make a positive impact. Uh, as far as how the city council can make some improvements, um, I've got some ideas that I would love to implement, such as bicycle police. Uh, it's difficult for an officer to get out of his car and approach someone without having some type of intent and drawing attention to that person. Uh, when you have, one day, you've got a lot of people that are out. And a bicycle officer can go around and stop, talk to people, get to know the local community. I think that will, uh, give them a better sense of security in knowing the police and having face-to-face interaction with them. And I, I think that it'll also help law enforcement. Uh, because a lot of times when you do that, you can get information that you may not have gotten otherwise, um, that can help prevent that. And these are a couple of the ideas that I'm wanting to present.
Les?
Thank you. Um, sir, I have to be about how you'd like to come along with marijuana in Trinidad?
Um, I actually originally came here, um, for that purpose. I have a conditional use permit. I've gone through council, got a conditional use permit, and gone through the state of Texas. I mean, the state of Colorado to get our license. Uh, the original investment, uh, cost triple us. So we've been kind of at a standstill. But my girlfriend, a friend of mine of thirty years, uh, works at a local dispensary. Um, we know everybody at the local dispensaries and, uh, are definitely seeing the benefits of that.
Mr. Murray, do you understand that if you're selected, you are required to follow policy, advice, and legal advice from city staff, of city staff? Are you willing to do that?
Absolutely, I'm just.
Go ahead, Les.
Mr. Murray, give us an example of the city council, something that has done in the last five years?
I'm getting about every fourth word.
You want to try again, Les, you broke up.
I will. I'm sorry. Let, let me try again. Mr. Murray, give us an example, you would please, of something, uh, over the last eight, five years that the council has done that you don't agree with? Uh, or something that you think council has not done well? Give us an example of something council, something you don't agree with?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm not going to say that I disagree. Um, one of the things that I am continuing to look into is the effects of five G. Uh, I know I was actually at a council meeting when that was approved. And I know that the council went off the information that they were given, um, by the phone company. And I, I can't, I don't want to say, uh, one way or another on that. I, I just, I do want to say that that is one thing that I am staying open to and continually, continuously looking into, uh, for any kind of new information in regards to the health of that.
Uh, Mr. Murray, you mentioned that, I think you've been here like five years. Uh, could you tell us, are you on any of the local boards or commissions or any participations in Trinidad?
Now, this has been my first, uh, the first opportunity that I've taken to try to get involved with, with the city. I, I work with local law enforcement on a semi-daily basis because of the land I own in the area that I live in. Um, so I've gotten to know the, the local law enforcement, have a really good working relationship with them.
Les?
Okay, thank you. And Mayor, we're about out of time. We have about a minute left.
Okay, go ahead, Les.
Mr. Murray, what is your understanding of? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, what is your understanding of the role of city council? And how do you see, uh, city council's role as is your position there?
Well, I, I see the role of city council being one that, uh, preserves what's already created and at the same time is expanding progress. Um, while considering, you know, why things are the way they are and then building on that.
Okay, Mr. Murray, uh, thank you for your time and, uh, and we'll see what happens. So, good luck.
I appreciate everybody's time. I look forward to seeing all y'all again and, uh, have a great day.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, gentlemen.
Okay, we'll get a chance to get positive chat.
Can you push down all this infected?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is my seat?
And that's your seat?
And they have a nude dance or does it scare them?
Does it help if I open these?
It'll be on the computer, be more backlight.
Is that?
Does it help if I open these so that there's more light on the front of her?
Let's try and see, it's all we can do.
Or no, does it look any better on there?
Yeah, it does.
Is that better?
Yeah, I think so. Ms. Bolton, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying for the vacant city council seat. On May nineteenth, at a regular city council meeting, Councilman Anthony Matei resigned from city council creating a vacancy. Five point one four, the vacancies states. The city of Trinidad, within four, uh, within forty-five days when the vacancy was created, councils shall choose by majority vote a duly qualified person to fill the vacancy. And that is what we are here for tonight. Please note that if appointed, this will be an eighteen-month period until the next regular municipal election. If you wish to go forward in the fall of, I have twenty twenty-one, you can put in your application to be voted in by the city electorate, which will be, then be a term of four years. Due to the number of applicants, we will be holding a ten-minute timeframe for introduction and questions. So please be as direct and brief so we will be able to ask as many questions as possible so council members can make an informed decision. Les, do you want to go ahead and give her the, talk to about the process?
Natural, good evening, Ms. Bolton. Do you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And I hope I don't refer to you as councilwoman because I am kind of accustomed to having done that in the past.
That would give it, that would give it premature.
It would be, but it's because you're past experience, is what I'm saying. And, uh, I'm not prejudiced anything, but Ms. Bolton, um, and so you know, we are a lot of independent, uh, applicant, this is important. Asking you please give a three-minute introductory, uh, components. And of course, as I was talking, you have three minutes of introduction. And then there will be statements and questions where the mayor and I will be asking questions. And the conclusion of all of the interviews, then the selection process will begin. And, um, hopefully you understand that. Anyways, do you have any questions, Mr. Mayor?
I don't believe so.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
I'm beginning, I'm sort of getting the introductory components by asking why you were elected to the council. So please use that as the beginning for your charge of your three minutes introductory remarks.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Why do you want to be on city council?
As you know, I served previously and really enjoyed the time I spent on council. And feel that I can come back in with a good background and knowledge that will assist the council. And that's my name reason.
Okay, Les?
Mayor, thank you. Ms. Bolton, would you like to give some thing that, that you, in terms of your introductory remarks, would you like to, you know, tell the, the few in the audience about yourself and anything else? Now, should you send a response to that, what you must do, if you would like?
Well, as most of you know, I served on city council from two thousand twelve through two thousand fifteen, the last two years of which, as Mayor Potem. During that three years, we had so much going on. Um, it was a rocky start, but we accomplished so much as far as the creative district, historic Main Street, um, uh, golly, I can go on and on, um. Uh, they designated, um, certified local government. All of that took place during my term. And so I am familiar with those. I think I can come back in realizing that there have been many changes, but still be able to jump on your work pretty easily.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, may I ask?
Please.
Most of us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, man, what do you think you would add to or how would you start in the city council if you were the person that is selected for the state?
I have always taken my seat on council very seriously. Have always been prepared for the meetings and prepared for discussions. Um, feels as if I've always gotten along very well with fellow council members. And look forward to working with everyone.
What do you see as the greatest challenge the city faces?
Right now, of course, is the COVID. And how can we, um, make up for all of the losses and all of the unexpected expenditures? I am familiar with the budgeting process, but I have a feeling that this year will be much different.
Les?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Bolton, I, I would touch on this, you know, in terms of your remarks said, not every loss probably is around the issue. So would you tell us, please, what boards and commissions you have done well in addition, or stuff are currently, in addition to your vast experience on city council?
I've served on the arts and cultural commission, the creative district board, um, historic Main Street board, and currently serves on the urban renewal board.
Ms. Bolton, is there one overriding issue that causes you to want to run for city council?
I'm sorry.
Is there one overriding issue that causes you to want to run for city council?
I want to see our state to be the best committee.
Les, go ahead.
I thank you. Um, Ms. Bolton, what is an example of, of something you think the city has done well over the last?
I think the handling of the marijuana funds has been handled very well. The way that parts have been distributed, parts have been put back and kept for the ready date, which is per se, um, I, I. regis, per se. I really appreciate how that has been handled.
Ms. Bolton, could you tell us if there is something the city council has not done so well or something that you disagree with over the last few years?
No, I really can't say anything in particular. Even though I haven't been present for the actual meetings, I perpetually watch them on Mr. Murphy's channel. They've become a little more difficult to follow once they came on the Zoom, but I have stayed up to date as much as possible.
Les.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, if you are just elected, there will be terms in your opinion or it will be challenged on council. How would you view that?
Every council member has their own ideas. And hopefully, they've all done the research to back those opinions. And the way to approach that is to listen carefully and digest everything that everyone has to offer. And then make a decision and not fight with the others because their opinion may be different than yours or that you think you have the absolute opinion. It takes working together.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, what is your vision for the city of Trinidad for the next five to ten years?
I would love to see us continue to grow, continue to see the downtown with more restorations, more renovations. Very excited about the new State Park and hope that that brings a lot of new recreational businesses and opportunities to the town.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, thank you very much. And good luck to you.
Thank you.
And, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Will I mess you up if I shift this table so that we get them away from this light?
Nope. No, I guess I've got them in there. I just moved this camera. I don't know what happened to that. I forgot. That was around here somewhere, the one that was in that window. Might be in the back closet.
I don't know. It's hard to imagine sitting at one of these places.
It's gonna have a little backlighting issue as the sun goes down. It's shining into the screen.
Is that better? Can you see me?
Got the thumbs up, it looks like. Thank you. Figure something out.
Sanitizing for you. Have you seated there?
You're ready.
You can take your mask off.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, I want to thank you for applying for the vacant city council seat. On May the nineteenth, at a regular city council meeting, Councilman Anthony Mate resigned from city council creating a vacancy. Five point one four vacancies of the city of Trinidad charter states, within forty-five days when vacancy was created, councils shall choose by majority vote a duly qualified person to fill the vacancy. That is what we are here doing, what we're doing tonight. Please note that if you are appointed, this will be an eighteen-month period until the next regular municipal election. If you wish to go forward in the fall of twenty twenty-one, you can then put in your application to be voted in by the city electorate, which will then be a four-year term. Due to the number of applicants, we will be holding a ten-minute timeframe for introduction and questions. So, please be as direct and brief so that we will be able to ask as many questions as possible so council members can make an informed decision. I will now have Mr. Downs explain to you the process.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Brown. Can you hear me?
I can.
I can.
Okay, thank you. So, when we begin, you are going to have, as you're asking, please have, you have three minutes of introductory remarks and then minutes of questions from the mayor and I. Please let us know if you're here to give our questions. We have ten people to interview. And after all of them are interviewed, then we will begin the voting process, the selection process. Do you understand that?
I do.
I do.
Okay, do you have any questions of any of us before you begin?
No question.
No question.
Okay, the first question will be?
So, whether the mayor... What, I'm sorry.
Mr. Brown.
Do you want to ask anything you'd like to have introductory?
Yeah, let's go ahead and give us your introductory remarks, please.
First of all, this is an honor, just being here and to do this. But the other night, I was very hungry. I've been a part of city council meetings for almost four years. And my little, actually, I'm looking at it over here, up there, yeah, my little place in the wall. I've come to have a real appreciation for what was on in this room. I learned about staff. I've just learned so much. I wish I would have known that we were, that I was going to be called to give an opening remark like this. I would have been challenged to keep it under three minutes. Anyways, thank you for having me. I'll do the best I can with the questions.
First question, Mr. Brown, why do you want to be on city council?
Teams. I almost finished over here a minute ago saying that I was fortunate enough to have the time to sit here and watch the way the council worked with staff, the city manager, city councillor. I spent forty years with the company that I worked for doing teamwork as a supervisor and as a union leader. I just really believe in teams. I worked best on teams when I first came to Trinidad. My first spot after a week here was your Margie Keever at Books and More. That was my, and I've been down and out for four years. Then that graduated to the library advisory board, then was cover lacking, putting fish in the water, and cleaning up the river. The bike trails, worked three years building bike trails. Those were all teams. Had the time of my life doing those, and I really want to be on this council.
All right, Les.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brown, what do you think you would add to council or how would you select the council if you would want to select to be to fill the state?
You know, I think it would be almost a continuation of the way I just concluded the last few minutes. I'm really, really an experienced team player. I don't know how much patting on the back I want to do, but I think I'm really good at it. I enjoy working with people like the mayor. We've got five really solid city council people. The other thing is, is that I've been with, you know, Parks and Recreation, like I said, at the bookstore. This town is in, you know, one of our last meetings, listening to Jeff Peterson and some of those folks. We've got wall to wall of good folks in this town. So, being a good team player is probably what I think I would bring to this.
Mr. Brown, what do you see as the greatest challenge the city faces?
I think it's going to be money. Until something happens in the future, hopefully in the near future, where we have the virus under control, I think it's going to be money. One of the things that really impressed me about the council and watching them work as a team, not the last meeting, but the team, the time before that, council talked about, or actually, Mike Valentine presented to the council X dollars to pay any to the rainy day fund. Before he finished, he said, "The staff and I have got something else for you to think about. We owe some money, or we have committed some money to two other organizations in town." The amount of money that we have ready to go into the rainy day fund is just about what we have pledged to those other two organizations. So, he asked councils to consider whether they wanted to put the money in the rainy day fund or give the money to the two people or the two organizations, excuse me, that we owe the money to. That's a team.
Go ahead, Les.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Brown, is there something you can think of that the city or city council has done over the last five years that you disagree with?
No.
No.
Nothing jumps to mind. I will tell you from some staff meetings or staff training that I had when I worked for the company in Idaho, one of the things that we learned is that organizations make over a period of time hundreds, hundreds of decisions. An individual or an organization is not going to nail them all. Every once in a while, there's going to be one or two that are going to pop up, and you're looking at each other, even on a team, and you're going to say to each other, "I wonder what we were thinking when we did that." They're not going to get them all right.
Mr. Brown, is there one overriding issue that causes you to want to run for city council?
You know, I think that we've just lost a good rep. As I watched everything happen up here for three and a half years, I really enjoyed Anthony, especially on Tuesdays when he, when the Oakland radio man would come in and have to pay up in some way. I liked Anthony, and I really saw him as a team player. He had, when you think about it, when he came to, and it came to be his time around the board, when all the different members of the council would give their, what's the word I was looking for? Because everybody had meetings with commissions and boards that they would go to. He always had colorful, colorful comments. And I enjoyed listening to him. And it made me aware of how important it was to be an active member of those boards and those councils. You know, for two and a half years, I worked with Councilwoman Grievo at the library, and now I'm working with Councilman Williamson at the, so those are important.
Go ahead, Les.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown, what boards and commissions have used X dollars?
I think just the library advisory board. Although, years ago, when I first started at the Books and More, there was like, there was a board of advisors made up about four or five of us that worked with Margie that just did the bookstore. And Mallory would come to those meetings. And it was from those meetings and my participation in those meetings that down the road, Mallory and Margie asked me if I would consider going to the library board. Now, I was, I had been a next-door neighbor for five years to Wayne Bridger. And I've gone to his meetings. I've been with Tim Christler, working on those hills for a long time. Parks and Recreation, did lots of those because they were so tied to what we did on the mountain. So, although I was only a member of two, I was closely attached to a couple more.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We have time for one more question.
Okay, Mr. Brown, there will be times, if you are selected, that your opinion or viewpoint will be challenged on council. How would you handle that?
Oh, kind of a tough one. You know, there's six council people and there's a mayor. And we have an active city manager. And there's going to be, there's going to be, I don't know if debates are the right ways to phrase it, but there's going to be ideas that are going to float up and down. And I'm not dogmatic, not a dogmatic person. Like I said, when we first started, I'm a real believer in teams. And I just, I don't perceive that I'm going to have any issues that I'm not going to be able to deal with that originate in somebody else's microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And that concludes your session, and good luck to you. Thank you very much. Thank you, folks.
Sun's gone down the lake really got better. The sun went down, so the lighting is just so much better.
It's gotten better. Okay, good.
We're trying to get the name right because of the backlighting.
Sure.
Oh, Mayor Rico.
Okay, are you?
Sir, can I remove my mask?
You can remove your mask.
All right.
Mr. DeBonan, I want to thank you for applying for the vacant city council seat. Give you a little background information. Just on May the nineteenth, at a regular city council meeting, Councilman Anthony Mate resigned from city council creating a vacancy. Five point one four vacancies of the city of Trinidad charter states, within forty-five days when vacancy was created, councils shall choose by majority vote a duly qualified person to fill the vacancy. This is what we are doing tonight. Please note that if appointed, there will be an eighteen, this will be an eighteen-month period until the next regular municipal election. If you wish to go forward in the fall of twenty twenty-one, you can then put your application to be voted in by the city electorate, which will then be a four-year term. Due to the number of applicants, we will be holding a ten-minute timeframe for introduction and questions. So, please be direct and brief. So, we will be able to ask as many questions as possible so council members can make an informed decision. Mr. Downs, I want to give him some more information on the process. Mr. Downs, do you want to give him some more information on the process? Good evening, Mr. Downs.
I'm glad to hear you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. DeBono, is the mayor worth touching the bullet? We are a lot in ten minutes on the chat, and we are asking that you please make introductory remarks for three minutes. And then we will have eleven minutes for the mayor himself to ask questions. Including that, Tom, for all ten applicants, then council will begin the voting procedure to narrow down the field, and you have to have the funds. And then decide. Do you have any questions about that, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to give you three minutes for an introduction, so if you would give us your three-minute introduction, then we'll begin with questions.
Hello, my name is Eli DeBono, and I'm excited to be here for this interview. Thank you for the opportunity at this time. A little background about myself, I taught math and science and coached for thirty-four years in school district number one. I provided security services in the area for twenty-five years, and I've had two successful businesses. So I do understand balance sheets and budgets, as well as profits and losses. I currently work in radio at KCRT, KBKZ. I have interviewed doctors, writers, celebrities, lawyers, and other intriguing people for our public affairs program, with over four hundred interviews to date. I believe that someone that holds a city council position needs to have the transparency and social skills to interact with fellow council members. I believe everything is predicated on communication and understanding to be able to address the issues of the city. I have the honesty and the ability to be able to communicate with council, residents, organizations. My main objective is to help this city continue in a positive direction. As a councilman, you're on the front lines of handling community and neighborhood concerns, issues, grievances, as well as inviting constructive feedback, which I feel is essential and imperative for improving yourself as a member of the city council. I firmly believe that anyone that serves on any board or council must possess integrity, grit, and also be a visionary. Every member of any board or council, they need to keep this in mind. You should always strive to work on improving yourself, not trying to prove yourself. Nothing is more toxic at any meeting when members can't get along. You don't have to agree with everyone, but you have to respect everyone's opinion. Who knows, you may learn something from someone you disagree with. I have the motivation, dedication, and commitment to be able to create sustainable, positive changes. I would serve public interest, attend meetings, study data, do research, and understand city planning and how it works. I want to be a catalyst in bringing an optimistic approach to the city. Trinidad needs to keep building civic infrastructures and leverage municipal resources to support and grow local businesses. This may lead to local entrepreneurs to dream and implement ideas of their own. I'm anchored here in the city. I love Trinidad, and I will always work to support the goals of moving our city forward. I feel I possess a combination of social skills that would allow me to be a good fit for the city council seat. A councilman needs to be respectful, polite, and distinctive towards others, as well as the staff, the public, regardless of likes, dislikes, friendships, or politics. In closing, I would like to first thank you for allowing me to be part of this interview process. I believe I would be an asset to any board with my ambition, compassion, organization, communication, and social skills, and a willingness to help others to grow above and beyond what is expected of me. My thirty-four years of teaching lessons has taught me many lessons as well. Here's one of them. There has to be as many givers as takers to create a proper balance in everything you do. My name is Eli DeBono, and I would like to be considered for this city council position. Thank you, and God bless you.
Okay, on with the first question. Mr. DeBono, why do you want to be on city council? Mr. DeBono, why do you want to be on city council?
I believe, Mr. Mayor, that I have the integrity and the honesty to be able to implement certain ideas based on rational judgment, because urbanization cannot happen in a vacuum. Cities need to provide basic infrastructure, clean water, sewers, roads, electricity, transportation, all the basic livelihoods that citizens and businesses strive for.
Les?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. DeBono, what do you see as the greatest challenge the city faces?
Mr. Downs, I believe, you know, I think we need to attract more of the millennials, because I believe if we invest in youth, their priorities, millennials value socialization. So it's important for rural communities, I believe, to create third spaces, places other than home or work, such as internet cafes and microbreweries. That's just one. But I would like to also provide entrepreneurial opportunities for the outsiders to come in and see what we have to offer, which is a great place to live. I've lived here sixty-five years. I would not change in a heartbeat. And engage and consult the youth, and see what they're... Everybody forgets about the millennials. They say, "Let's take them to the side." They have some great input. They're very intelligent, and they have a lot of insight in what's going on.
Mr. DeBono, what do you think you would add to, or how would you strengthen city councils?
I believe I would add an enlightening concept to everyone on the council. I believe my ideas. I work in radio. I'm in contact. I go places. I interact with people, and I get a feel of how they feel. Not only the people that are involved in businesses and restaurants and so forth, but the people on the street that no one cares about, that they just kind of shut to the side. I believe I could be a tremendous asset in this capacity.
Les?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. DeBono, how do you feel about legalizing marijuana, especially in this community?
Well, Mr. Downs, let's go back four months when everything was hunky-dory. You know, if it wasn't for the legalization of marijuana right now, our state taxes would be at a crunch, a base minimal. So I believe, you know, since we have put a moratorium on a lot of the marijuana businesses, which is fine, because I think we have enough, and I think they're sustaining a business idea for the city to hold, and I think it's going to be here to stay.
Mr. DeBono, there will be times, if you are selected, that your opinion or viewpoint will be challenged on council. How will you handle that?
I will handle that with respect. I will be open-minded. I would be able to listen. I'm a good listener. I try not to talk out of place, but I try to understand the other side, and a person's opinionated objective is something that you have to value, because it is a human value.
Les?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I think you... Mr. DeBono, are there... Are there any forwards or commissions that you have served this state, sir?
I served on the YMC board, YMC eight board, twenty-some-odd years ago. I also, I visited various council and board meetings. My father was on boards, probably thirty to forty boards during the time I grew up, and I always was interested in his opinion and what he thought about certain issues that the city were facing. But to be honest with you, not very many.
Mr. DeBono, something the city council has not done so well, or something you disagree with that city council has done over the last few years? Do you have any items that you think that you would...
Can you repeat that, Mr. Mayor?
Something that the city council has not done so well, or something that you disagree with that city council has done in the past few years?
Well, I believe the city council is always going in a positive direction. Now with the COVID nineteen, I know the health department kind of supersedes all of the businesses and entities in the area, but I don't really disagree with a lot of the things that the city is introducing right now.
Les?
Mr. DeBono, what is your understanding of city council? How do you view the city council and the approach of city council?
Well, I believe that in order to make a great city or have a great city council, you have to be open to anyone. Everyone has an opinion and an idea, and it has something for everyone. It can attract not just the person on the street, but, you know, someone from out of town. And you need a framework for urbanization for allowing surrounding development, which I think is vital. And you have to have a sustainable living environment, as well as nurturing a civil society.
Are we okay for time?
Thank you, Mr. DeBono. Mayor, if you have one more question?
Okay, hypothetically, Mr. DeBono, let's say that there's a disagreement on council. How would your skills help to find consensus or resolve a dispute on council?
Well, I believe I can neutralize any situation that can maybe be aggressive or maybe obstinate on both sides. I can rationalize with people. I taught school for thirty-four years. I've spoken to many audiences, and I think I can do a good job in diffusing the people that are arguing.
Mr. DeBono, that concludes this interview, and I want to say thank you and good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Does anybody need a break?
Let's go ahead and take about a five minutes, or if everybody wants to mute temporarily, let's give everybody about a five-minute break.